All right, for our attendees that are virtual, can you hear me? Just like nod. Can you hear me? You're good? Okay, I'm just doing a sound check. Thank you very much. And then I'm going to turn it over to the mayor of the city of Ketchikan.
Thank you. So I'd like to call this city of Ketchikan work session with the Cruise Line International Association to order. Would you please call a rule? Here. Here. So with that, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The Ketchikan City Council would like to respectfully acknowledge the traditional first people of this land in Ketchikan, the Tonga's Kinkit people. So with that, bring this to item 13, which is the introductions and expectations. So we'll start first with introductions from Cruise Line International associate members. So how do you want to run that? Do you want to run it? Introduce them. Why don't you introduce them?
I think that Renee, would you be able to kind of handle that from your end?
Absolutely. I'll try to spearhead it going through my, going through my screen here. So hi, I'm Renee Lamosh Reeve, Vice President of Government and Community Relations here at CLIA. I'm just going to go across my screen in no particular order. I see Ashley on here from Virgin Voyages, Ralph Samuels from Holland America Princess, Kirby Day from Holland America Princess, Michelle Johnson, I believe, Johansson, sorry, not with us. Sandy Weir is with, here with us from NCL, Lalea Downs with CLIA here in Alaska as well. Deirdre Coates with Royal Caribbean Group, Darian Flowers with MSC, Jan Olav, who you had the pleasure of meeting in the fall with, or in the spring with MSC as well. Elizabeth Bowling, also with Royal Caribbean Group, Mark Freeman, Mark is with American Cruise Lines. We've got Preston Carnahan with Royal Caribbean. Robert Morganstern, Holland America Group. Jose Fernandez with Disney, Paolo Mazino with MSC, Beth Thibodeau with Disney, and Brianna Freeman with Virgin Voyages. Did I miss any of my own members? Okay, well, there you go.
Jaclyn again, Ketchikan City Council.
Abby Bradbury, Ketchikan City Council.
Dick Coos, Ketchikan City Council.
Judy Zingy, Ketchikan City Council.
And Bob Severs, and I'm the mayor. And with that, I'd like to introduce the state's captain to present, Lacey. Could you do that, please?
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lacey Simpson. I'm the acting city manager for the city of Ketchikan. To my right is Sean Hart, our acting assistant city manager. We have Lori Boisa, our tourism manager, Kim Stanker, our city clerk, Seth Brackey, our public works director, and Wayne Phillips, our Porton Harbors director.
Thank you, Lacey. So with that, are there any persons to be heard today in regards to?
Oh, Riley.
Riley, are you up there? Yeah. Hello.
Yeah, I'm also here. Thank you, Bob. I'm here.
All right, introduce yourself, I guess.
Okay, I'm Riley. I'm also on the state council.
Thank you, Riley. And Michelle?
Michelle Johansson, Finance Director.
Thank you. So with that, persons to be heard, is there anybody that wishes to speak to the group today? All right, thank you very much. And so with that, we're going to go to the industry remarks. Renee, what do you have for us today?
I don't want to take a lot of time. I think we all know that the best part about this meeting is the ongoing dialogue between the industry and the city. But thank you for another fantastic season visiting Ketchikan. We continue to be very appreciative of our conversations with Lacey and Lori and with individual city council members. We all know that the ongoing dialogue is essential to our mutual success, and these meetings have become a part of that. And I think we all appreciate the opportunity to get together at least once a year in person and have this conversation and have this follow-up in the fall. To that end, we're super pleased to have both MSC and Virgin Voyages joining us on today's call. They will be new visitors to Ketchikan next year. So we're, we've been very thrilled to have them be part of the conversations that we're having with communities engaged in government and community relations in Alaska before they're even here. It's been, it's been a really nice, nice introduction. We also remain focused on the use of passenger fees on infrastructure projects, which we view as critical to the industry and community. And again, just thank you for this opportunity. We know that, we know that it's, it's not always easy to, to have the conversations one-off and that doing this in a group and being able to have that dialogue is, is really important. So thank you for offering this again as a venue to do it.
Thank you, Renee. And so with that, I'd like to say that it seems we had a great tourism season. The numbers were up. We survived construction. But there's plenty of work to do, it sounds like, moving forward with newer ship, bigger ship, and more passengers, the logistics of moving them around, providing services in the community. But we, we appreciate your input and, and what you hear from your passengers would be important in regards to the services that are provided in Ketchikan to make it a world-class place to visit. So with that, I'd like to move into the work session and some topics of discussion. And so how about a season recap? I think that's where we're at now. So cruise partners, do you have anything else in regards to your recap of the season? So I, I saw in the paper where you guys had a record year this year, which is great. I think that there are new facilities being built in the state, more opportunities. We've got new players coming in. But last year, I think, was, we had days that we had few ships, lower numbers. We had days when we had just the right number of passengers, and we had days where it was plucked. And trying to manage all the individuals to make sure they get on their tours. We had a wet, wet beginning of the year, wasn't really inviting for passengers to get off in the communities, but that turned around later on in the year. So I didn't know if you've heard much about how that's been working out with your passengers. Any input and feedback you get would be appreciated at some point, whether through this meeting or related to Lacey or the tourism director. So with that, we'll ask our city staff, do you want to start, or do you want the port director to start, Lacey?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I would agree with, with Renee that we had a really great season. Things seemed to go very smoothly. We started off weather-wise with a pretty rough summer, which I think impacted everybody's operations, but it kind of pulled out and ended, I think, on a high note. But I'm going to turn it over to our Porton Harbors Director, Wayne Phillips, to talk a little bit more in detail about how operations went at the port this summer.
I believe it is. Everybody hear me okay? Excellent. So I'm Wayne Phillips. I'm the Porton Harbors Director for the city of Ketchikan. I just want to touch over a few notes here in regards to the 25 Ketchikan cruise season and talk a little bit about the 26 cruise season as well. Overall, as Renee noted, this was a safe and successful season. It certainly did start out a little rainy, but it got a lot better. And just overall, I think the season went quite well. For anyone that missed the April 23 work session, the following items were addressed, and Porton Harbors kind of took care of a lot of this before the season kicked off. There was a promenade stabilization. That's the entrance exit portion of that promenade near Survey Point Holdings. Cruise Line Agency of Alaska, we had some work completed in March to reduce some vibration that was going on at the end there. Some X-bracing was done, new fill. We also, on berth one, we had the ride piles were renewed for the vessel fendering system. That was taken care of prior to the start of the 2025 season. We also had cathodic protection survey of the port. That was completed in March of 2025. And essentially what that revealed is that we have replacements of cathodic protection that needs to be done throughout the port. We had missing and torn pile wraps that will need to be repaired and replaced, and as well as some coating system failures that will need to be addressed. The pedestrian walkway between berth two to the Ketchikan Visitors Bureau Center was done this year. We put, planners were placed on the port to separate people from buses, vans, and vehicles on the port. We believe this worked very well, and really it was more of a safety-centric approach that we did. We're going to go ahead and do that again for the 2026 season. And this, as well as the Front Street Extension drop-off and pickup worked well. We'll do both of those again next year. For the 2026 cruise season, we have berth three mooring dolphin upgrades that are on the, out for bid at the moment. Those bid openings are scheduled for the 12th of November. This project's to upgrade the deep-water dolphins and bollards. This will increase the capacity to safely dock larger vessels. If awarded, this project is scheduled to start the fall of 2026 and be completed prior to the spring 27 cruise season. We'll continue, as I said, the pedestrian walkway, berth two to KBB, and we'll continue with the Front Street Extension drop-off and pickup area with the same rules to ensure traffic flow as intended on Front Street. Cathodic protection work is currently being discussed for possible 2026 capital improvement project. Of course, this will, is approvals are pending city council and further discussions. We've also submitted a federal grant application to help with the cathodic protection items for the Ketchikan port, and we'll see how that turns out. But that, that request has been placed with the federal government at the, and we'll hopefully see some positive results of that. Finally, kudos to the port staff, the temporary summer workers, the tourism industry, workers and cruise lines for helping to make this a successful season. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
So with that, we're going to move to item B, I think, which is the update topic from previous work sessions. So Wayne, can you tell us a little bit about the cathodic protection and how we're going to address the timetable on that and potential costs?
Yes, Your Honor. Essentially, what we have done is we have placed a breakdown of capital improvement projects that will have to, have to happen. Those have been placed into our software system, ClearGov. What we're trying to take care of is, we were looking at, we had a professional engineering company that came in, that kind of identified the work that needs to be done. We had another company that also looked at the items that needed to be done and based on priority is how we're, we're going to try to do this work. It will be multiple years. Initially, what they're looking at is the higher the priority, the sooner we'll need to be able to take care of those things. And that's kind of the intent. How do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time? So we're going to try to do this one bite at a time. And, you know, hopefully over the next few years, we'll slowly get this, this work taken care of. Cathodic protection, as everybody knows in here, is a, always a continual thing. Preventive maintenance is always a continual thing, and that's what we're trying to do. One of the things that I will say is when we had the company, Taku Engineering actually came down from Anchorage and did the report, they did say, hey, you know, your, your port's in pretty good shape, even though we have all this work that needs to be done, but you need to take care of this now so it doesn't become a problem later. So, Your Honor, that's, that's the idea is to slowly, we're basing it on priority and getting these things done over multiple years.
Thank you. Any questions in regards to the cathodic protection as we move forward? Who do we have? We have a hand up? Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was actually twofold. One was, first of all, actually, before I ask a question, there's a lot of great work and congratulations to the port, and we appreciate it. And I was wondering if you could amplify a little bit more on the work at berth three, which sounds great. And, and then on cathodic protection, just wanted to reemphasize how important that is. We've been talking that for a long time and, and I'm encouraged to hear you guys making such good progress. So I'd like to learn a little more about berth three, what you've got planned there.
Just, just a, just a real quick. I think at one time, this is a project that was, was started quite a few years ago. Essentially what it is to put a bigger deep-water dolphin in and with a higher capacity as well as shoreside bollards that will go on as well. It's just, it's not really expanding. It's really making it a lot safer for all the vessels to tie in there, especially when you start getting higher winds and things like that. That's the reasoning behind this particular project.
Yeah, I've, I've seen times where there's five, six, seven spring lines tied to one bollard, which is definitely not recommended. So it's great. Is, are you adding additional bollards?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add something? Just to refresh industry's memory, this is the same project that we had discussed back in 2023 with industry when we were trying to reach some sort of a mutual agreement on how to fund this project because we did have safety concerns on that berth's ability to continue accommodating the vessels that are now in the market because of all the reasons, Robert, that you just mentioned in terms of its sort of smaller size and not really being the best setup to accommodate larger vessels. And we did put this project out to bid, but the cost came back much higher than originally anticipated. So we put the brakes on it. And with council authorization, back in July, we decided to pursue the project again because the need hasn't gone away. The ships aren't getting smaller. So it's still very much a relevant project. So that's why we decided to pursue it. And hopefully, as Wayne mentioned, we'll, we'll begin work in earnest on it next year.
So Lacey, with the delay in that project, what is the cost increase from when we originally started to what we're at now?
Yeah, so the, the estimated cost inclusive of a 10% contingency is $9.7 million. And I believe when we put it out to bid before, it was more in the $8 million range. So it's obviously increased over the last several years with the various inflationary factors. So obviously, as time goes on, this project is not going to get any cheaper. But this project coupled with the plans that Ketchikan Dock Company has at berth four, these are definitely the lowest hanging fruit in terms of sort of future-proofing, or at least welcoming the next increment of vessels that are going to be calling and are already calling at the port of Ketchikan.
Thank you. Any other questions? So in regards to vessel safety and mooring, the video of the ed breaking away from the dock was, was amazing. And to the credit of the crew to get that under control and, and the situation that they were in and to prevent any further damage or injuries was impressive. Having seen that, what happened at the Juno Dock during that, has there been any concerns or changes in ship operations in Alaska where we, we go into these ports that winds can come up dramatically like that, or is it just a one-off and we're going to stay with the same protocols we have? Anybody have any comments on how we're going to? The, the thing with, with Ketchikan and to some extent Juno is our passengers are right next to those bollards and the bussing and everything else is in close proximity of those lines. And I just don't know if there's any concerns from the industry in regards to how that happens.
Yeah, hi, Mayor Saberson, Porton City Staff, Preston Carnahan here from Royal Caribbean Group, including Celebrity. And I appreciate you asking and especially following up on the discussion for the extension of the berth three capacity. And, you know, the, the position that we're constantly in as newer ships come to the market and infrastructure continues to get aged is ensuring that the infrastructure is right-sized to the vessels who call those ships. And that's an ongoing discussion. And I would say that, you know, this year is the first year that Royal has increased some calls outside of city docks, and those were with our larger ships. And one of the reasons is some of the, the, the more limited and legacy infrastructure at the downtown facilities. So as we look at berth three, it's not only the new, the new dolphins, it's also the existing bollards. As was referenced earlier, anytime we're looking at multiple lines going, so it's, I'm glad to see that we are looking at increased infrastructure, especially on berth three and city docks. I would say that there's a number of different vessel needs that need to be met in this discussion. And so we remain open, as I know the other members here do, to, to share our information and data on those ships to ensure that the new infrastructure meets those needs. And a little more poignant answer on that, we're always evaluating the winds, the current conditions. And as you said, you know, thankfully, there was not a catastrophic issue and result of that in, in Juno. However, I think it's always top of mind for the safety of everyone involved, both shipboard and shoreside, that the infrastructure is built to a point that we never have these issues. That's all our shared goal. And so as we continue these discussions about, you know, infrastructure in general, that's really where we're all coming from. Everyone's ships need to be safe, and, and through this process, they will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up on that. So when you build a new ship to come into the market, is there a recommendation for mooring requirements for that ship? How do you come up with the, the shoreside infrastructure support ship, a new ship, new size ship for configuration coming into market?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Saberson, for the question. So the answer is yes. There, there is a process that we go through, whether it's a new ship, a new class of ship, or a newer ship in the market. We essentially take the ship specifications, align it with the pier that it's going to, and we have a mooring analysis. So we use third parties to conduct those mooring analysis, and those mooring analysis define how many lines can go to a certain bollard, the strength of those bollards. And so that's usually a marine engineering company. And we, we use the findings of that mooring analysis to determine, first, can the ship safely go there? If not, what infrastructure upgrades are needed for that to happen and under which conditions? And that's really industry-wide. All of our ships have different specifications from a marine perspective. And so we go through the process of developing a mooring analysis. We align that with the infrastructure at the berth that the ship is considering calling. And then from that time, we either make a determination through marine teams and technical consultants that the pier is safe in today's condition, or that it needs to be upgraded in the future in order to safely accommodate the ship. And that, that process is largely through a mooring analysis.
So is that information shared with the community that you're visiting with the ships that are in the market?
It, it is generally available information. I would say we, we work through the dock owners. So depending on who owns the facility, because we're working with them on their, either, again, either their existing infrastructure or in some cases what needs to be built. So if we take the example of berth number three, we have all shared our information that I've seen on the ships that currently call Ketchikan and use that to develop different mooring analysises. Not sure exactly where that, where that ended and landed, but I do know that we have some iterations of those. It's not usually a one-time discovery, simply because, again, we all have different ships and requirements. But that's something that we, we openly share when we're working to upgrade infrastructure and ensure the safety of the ships and the safety of the ports and the bollards.
That's part of also what cruise line agencies does as well. When they're considering birthing across the, the region, they, they've got an understanding of, you know, the, the ship's capabilities with the pilot's point of view is particularly with wind pilots, you know, have a strong voice and they will help fit the right puzzle pieces where it belongs. And Preston did a great job of explaining mooring. The only other thing I would also add is also gangway placement is another part of that consideration because the ships all have very different arrangements on where their gangways are placed, from what deck and how many they can put down and what the tidal issues are. And that's another part of the, part of the, the puzzle to figure out along with mooring. So it's a lot of variables.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Yes, Abby.
So I'm curious to know if city staff or port director in particular has that information on future ships that are coming and what improvements we need to make on our three city docks. This is the first time I've heard expression of more bollards. I've always heard more length than, you know, they wanted the length on berth three, not necessarily more bollard. So now I'm starting to kind of wonder, you know, where does that lie in two years? Do we need more bollards somewhere else? Can we kind of beef up smaller areas or something? So I just didn't know if city staff was aware of those improvements that we particularly might need on our city docks.
Lacey.
Oh, Your Honor, I'm going to defer to our Porton Harbors Director. I guess relative to the bollards, that was always something that was part of the berth three improvement project. But in terms of what, what Preston had mentioned, when new vessels are being scheduled to enter the market, what their unique needs are, I'm going to turn that to Wayne.
So Councilmember Bradbury, yes, the, the berth three dolphins, that's a dolphin and some bollards. That was part of that project all along. I think normally what would happen is if a new vessel comes, comes in from industry, they would look at our configuration and see if they can, in fact, you know, tie up here and fit here. Depending on what direction they're going, there's different configurations that they tie up. So normally that would be something that the industry would look at. And if there was an issue, I'm, I'm pretty sure industry would come to us and say, hey, we've got an issue. Can you do this? Can we do this? How can we make this work? So that's normally that, how that would go. I have not heard from industry anything different at, at the moment. So far, the vessels that are tying up, things that are going, that seems to be what we have in place is, is working for them at the moment. The berth three issue was, as these vessels are getting bigger, we do need to, you know, The berth three issue was as these vessels are getting bigger, we do need to, you know, we talked about this before, we have to expand to be able to safely tie these vessels up. What these what this particular project will actually do is if the winds do come up like they did in Juneau, it'll make it a lot better and safer for them to tie up. And that's kind of the mindset between the berth three. And like I said, if industry has issues or or concerns, they can certainly reach out to us so we can see what we need to do. And of course, I'd bring that to City Council and talk and discuss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I I know that you guys are investing in Alaska, building new ports, electrification and the likes. And as a community like Ketchikan, when we try to keep up with the expanding needs, is there any place we can go look for grants and loans and support in regards to maintain our infrastructure to a level that meets the needs of the growing cruise industry? Do you have any insight into that?
Mayor Mayor Saberson, I'll I'll take a crack. I the grant world has changed a lot. I can speak to a couple of federal grant programs that we were engaged with that were both canceled. Brick grants were all canceled. We had a brick grant in place in Skagway to help remediate the the hillside and with the rock slide that was threatening the railroad dock there was canceled after the new administration came in and on the PIDP front. I'm not sure if those grants were affected, but port infrastructure development probably is the remaining area. I maybe Lacey or somebody from council knows. I just not sure if those are were in the same bucket as the rest of the federal grants that were canceled.
Thank you for that information. Anything else in regards to the port infrastructure and aesthetic protection that we've been doing? Hearing none. Under item B, there's also the promenade extension project?
Your Honor, I'd like to invite our Public Works Director Seth Brackey to give an overview and update on that project.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, honored guests, Seth Brackey, the Public Works Director for the city of Ketchikan. Here today to give a brief update on the promenade expansion project. A little project background, this will construct new promenade in the area behind and near the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show. It'll be the final piece to connect up our entire waterfront promenade. The project cost estimates at currently at $7.5 million. Since our last update, the city of Ketchikan has executed a memorandum of agreement with the State of Alaska Department of Transportation. That was done in September of this year. And with that, we'll be able to move the project forward utilizing a $5 million federal grant and a $2.5 million local match for that project. So a little schedule update with the funding and the memorandum of agreement in place. We'll be able to move forward on federal permitting and environmental permitting and obtaining the last easement that we need from the GSA, the federal government. With DOT on board, we're excited that we'll have another partner to help us get that easement obtained and advance the project. So at this point, the projected project schedule is to bid for construction in the winter of 2026. So that's all I have. Any questions on that project?
So Seth, will the state be managing that project or will the city?
So ultimately, the state will manage it with our assistance.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions for our partners? Hearing seen none. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Next one is an update on city Ketchikan request of Ketchikan Gateway Borough for CPV fund. Lacey.
Your Honor, I just before we we discuss CPV funding, just I wanted to point out in the audience that Ms. Eden Shaw maybe had a question. And so I just wanted to put that on your radar if now is the time or if you'd like to.
This would be fine. Elizabeth.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone. Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's not so much a question, but I was going to ask to be added to the agenda to talk about cultural tourism. We weren't invited to attend this meeting, and so I wanted to say thank you for allowing me to be here. I do have some remarks regarding cultural tourism and partnering with the cruise industry. And so I don't know where on the agenda that can be. But I I wanted to ask if I can share a few remarks. So I I don't want to get you off topic, but I do have some prepared remarks.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. And hello to everyone online. Hi, Preston. It's great to see you virtually. So again, happy Indigenous Peoples' Day. My name is Emily Eden Shaw. Hello to everyone behind me. I'm both Yupik and Anubak. My family comes from Imanik, Alaska. I was also adopted Raven Thunderbird out of Old Massa, Heideguy. Outside of work, I'm very proud that I'm a PhD candidate. Hopefully going to graduate my doctorate in May. I have the honor to serve as a tribal administrator and CEO of Ketchikan Indian Community. And as the Assembly knows and the council knows, this is our sovereign government for Ketchikan. And again, I just want to make mention that we were not invited to this work session. I'd like to kindly request that any work session moving forward, please reach out to me. I know Preston knows how to get ahold of me, but as a sovereign government, both Ketchikan and Saksman should be part of these meetings. So I'm going to read from my remarks, and I just want to say that I enter this room really with a lot of hope for our future. For those of you who know me, know that I am one of the loudest voices in Alaska when it comes to cultural tourism. I did a stint on the state tourism board, and then I got voted off the state tourism board. But as my auntie said, is that's a badge of honor because I'm here to make change for our people. And I believe in the power of tourism and especially cultural tourism. So KIC is the largest IRA tribe in Alaska. We represent more than 6,603 tribal tribal citizens who's who are Klinka, Haida, and Simpsham peoples. We are the original stewards of the of this land. We are a sovereign government and a and a major employer and a leading economic engine in Ketchikan. Our tribe operates essential services for the entire community, including healthcare, education, housing, workforce development, and cultural preservation. And we are the only entity for the second year in a row who have stood up a cold weather shelter, ensuring that when temperatures drop, our unhoused relatives, both native and non-native, have a safe place to go. Despite this, KIC does not receive a single dollar from local tax revenues, not from sales tax, not from property tax, not from bed tax, and not from the cruise ship head tax. And for those of you who may not know, we actually pay the city more than $200,000 a year in sales tax because of our properties. So when we gather here to talk about infrastructure and tourism and the cruise line industry, I really want to be clear. I'm here to talk about our people. Every summer, this community welcomes the equivalent of the of the population of Phoenix, Arizona to Ketchikan into our ancestral homeland. The visitors who come here are drawn by the totem poles, the art, the stories, and the indigenous beauties that define Ketchikan. And yet, our people remain largely invisible in the planning, the profit, and the policy. As you all know, the cruise industry globally is more than $160 billion. With that level of wealth and power, we have to ask this question. Why isn't there a stronger commitment to cleaner fuels and environmental responsibility? The health of our people is tied to the health of our lands and waters. The same waters our ancestors have fished for thousands of years and now are burdened by emissions and waste. If this industry can generate billions in revenue, it can and must invest in cleaner, more sustainable practices that honor the environment we all depend on. And while we talk about investment, let's be honest about who is benefiting. Right now, it's not the people of this land. It's not anyone in this room primarily. It's not the families who live here year round. It is the corporations headquartered in Miami and those who pack up at the end of the season while our community shoulders the strains on housing, infrastructure, and local services. So again, I ask you who is really benefiting. As I mentioned in my in my in my earlier remarks, it is time to transform tourism in Ketchikan. We need a model that invests in the people who make this place what it is. The indigenous peoples who stewardship stories and spirit define Ketchikan. That means dedicating a portion of their revenues to cultural tourism and indigenous engagement. That means building year round jobs and economic opportunities that sustain our families. And that means holding the industry accountable for environmental impact by demanding and asking for cleaner fuels, stronger standards, and genuine partnership with tribal leadership. KIC is ready to lead and to collaborate, but we must be invited to the table. We bring deep expertise, cultural integrity, and a long term vision rooted in balance and respect. Our ancestors taught us that every decision must serve the next seven generations. That's the standard KIC holds itself to, and that's the standard we ask this community and industry to rise to as well. Let's ensure the future of tourism in Ketchikan reflects not just profit, but people, place, and purpose. Thank you again for allowing me to share my remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
So just to the point, Emily, the the meeting that we're having here today is regards to the seven ports of call, the use of CPV monies and an ongoing collaboration to see how we can partner to build the infrastructure to bring new ships here. There's a larger group that can work on cultural what we are very supportive of, working with the borough. They have a tourism plan that they're working with, they publish. And then there's community within the community, we will do meetings through our tourism directors and stuff like that to see what we can do to improve the experiences here in town. So the I think the process would be what we gather from our internal work through the community, then could be shared to this group. And any of the concerns that we may have in regards can be shared with the city and with this group.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may respond, I will say I've seen really successful models all across Alaska, especially with Royal Caribbean going into the Chudiyach area where they're engaging tribes and indigenous people. And I know because I was part of that. Really, at the end of the day, I ask that we involve, we be involved at every entry point when we start talking about tourism and infrastructure. We are stronger together, as I shared. You know, we are an economic engine. We, you know, every year, more than $50 million that we just we generate in terms of our operating, in terms of our operating budget and whether if it's infrastructure, birth, economic development, those online, I just really want to respectfully ask that we are involved and asked to be part of every single conversation, including cultural tourism and tourism in general.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So with that, we'll continue with the update on the request from the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for CPV.
Your Honor, I'd like to turn it over to our tourism manager, Laurie Boyssa, to give a little bit of an overview of ongoing conversations with the Ketchikan Gateway Borough for possible use of their CPV monies within city limits.
So thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm Laurie Boyssa. I'm the tourism manager. And for those of you I haven't met on online there, hello. We, the city requested that the Ketchikan Gateway Borough share some of their CPV funding with us so that we can continue to do work in our port. Because the great bulk of the visitors come through our downtown every year. So even the folks who go out to Ward Cove, the majority of them come into town. They get dropped off. They use our promenade to get into town. They use our facilities. They're sitting on our benches. They're using our water, all the things that we offer for all of the visitors. So to help support that visitation, we asked the borough to share some of their CPV funds with us. They have agreed to share $500,000 with us. And what we are doing right now is we're putting together a request. Working with myself, with Public Works, and with the port to create a list of priorities of the types of projects that we could accomplish with that funding. Right now, we are, I think, very close, Wayne, I think we're really close to pulling together a list with some price tags on them of the types of things that we could use that funding for. Mostly what we're looking at are the things that would be sorry, more of a visitor amenity type situation, benches, we need more benches, we need more garbage cans, we need we're looking at the possibility of a rain shelter down on berth one. So anyone who was ever had to wait to get on a ship or wait for a tour down on berth one knows how kind of miserable that can be. So we're looking at the kinds of projects that could be immediate, have have an immediate impact with our visitors. And then we are going to be talking with the borough about those projects.
Thank you. So Lacey, we get there's a $5 for this port of call, and we get $2.50 of that. Our share of CPV monies, do we spend it on port infrastructure? Or do we how much of it do we spend on port infrastructure? How do we spend it? How much more do we spend on community improvements for gas?
Your Honor, historically, we've not allocated much of our CPV to port infrastructure, although we certainly can. And there's been times that we've done that. How it's allocated is primarily now through the tourism department. So through Laurie's department, and it has been primarily with an eye toward projects that offer a visitor enhancement of some sort, both on and adjacent to the port of Ketchikan. So we've used it for a bit further off the port, but the upgrade of the museum restrooms at the Centennial Building, because those are a public restroom that was very much in need within the the Creek Street area. We've used them on other amenities, benches. We enhanced our garbage cans throughout the the port and downtown area. We've done lots of things over the years, and certainly we can use it for for port infrastructure. And we do have our finance director, Michelle, on board. Michelle, I don't know if you'd like to add anything more to that in terms of historically how we've used CPV funds?
Well, I have a list going back to 2012. We port fender pile, Thomas Basin seawall, sheet pile ramp, museum restroom, like you said, Centennial Building, Totem Heritage Center improvements, totem pole clean and repair. Port improvements for berth one and two expansion, rock pinnacle removal. That was a partially, that was a grant, partially grant funded project, so not all of it was funded by CPV. Re reconfiguration of berth three and parking lot, Creek Street improvements, downtown visitor amenities. Those are the big ones, port piling sculptures. And then some operational activities. And mostly now, the operational activities involve the tourism division, which is Laurie. But we have a full accounting of all the funds we've used, and we can certainly distribute that if needed.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Your Honor. There we go. I, I want to be careful not to get too granular on city borough business to be respectful of our partner's time. Uh, I'm glad to hear that we won some concession from the borough with respect to CPV funds, but I just wondered what the nature of that agreement might be, if it's a one-off deal, if it's an annual agreement, if it's going to be reconsidered every year, if there's some structure in place to ensure that we're seeing some of that revenue going forward beyond this year.
Uh, Councilmember Finnegan, um, so the $500,000 that was put aside is just in FY 2026. So I think the borough is agreeable to, um, future uses of CPV funds, but each time we would need to make a request. So it's, it's a little arduous, but it's also good because we can tailor that to changing needs and circumstances. Just to go back a little bit, um, on what Laurie had started with, if the city council recall, we initially put in a proposal, a request of the borough that was a total of, of $1 million. And it was primarily for, um, studies and other analyses involving port infrastructure. At the risk of speaking for the borough, but I feel like I'm at liberty to say this because they were quite clear, they're not very interested in supporting projects that are, um, studies, analysis, reports, things of that nature. They, they would rather support projects that have a tangible benefit to, to the visitors. And so that's why we've shifted our focus now to do things that are more, I think, amenity in nature. So hopefully that answers your, your question, Councilmember Finnegan.
Thank you, Lacey. Jay?
Thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Laurie, for the presentation. This is the first time we are hearing about the $500,000 from the borough. This is the first time we are hearing about the $500,000 CPV shares from the borough. My question is, even Mr. Preston just mentioned in his presentation earlier that there'll be ships, there were three ships that would be docking outside of city docks. All these passengers come to the city. I mean, and it's 80% of the passengers that come downtown, if not more. Have we had a conversation with our cruise line partners to help us with some of the infrastructure of these use of our infrastructure, our restrooms, our streets, our promenade, uh, many of the facilities, the bathrooms? Because I think the 500,000 is not enough. And what will happen going to the future is that more and more ships will be docked outside of city docks and our infrastructure is getting taxed without having any monies from anywhere to help support the infrastructure, help support the safety and the pleasant amenities for the cruise ship passengers.
Uh, Your Honor and Councilmember Matani, um, if I'm understanding the question correctly, so, um, we've not directly had conversations with industry about supporting those types of projects in terms of use of CPV funds, because those CPV funds are directly allocated to the Ketchikan Gateway Borough that are in part paid by passengers that are now calling at Ward Cove. So, um, our, our direction and our focus has been to continue those conversations with the Gateway Borough, with Ketchikan Gateway Borough, um, to see if there are things that we can mutually partner on and that have that, that benefit for all of the reasons that you stated for, for safety, for amenity, uh, those types of things. But I'll also be, be very honest and clear that the Ketchikan Gateway Borough, um, they are their funds. And so it's up to their assembly on how they want to allocate, um, what their own needs are. So all, all I think we can do is continue to have those conversations. And I'm encouraged that this year they did set aside, um, the $500,000 pending a proposal by the city that's agreeable to their assembly.
Abby?
Yeah, great job on the $500,000. I'm interested to see where that list is. But I think this whole conversation, um, you know, we're, we're just talking about within our community, that $5. Well, that $5 does come to us through the state. The state determines how much we get. Have we thought about possibly garnering support with our partners and the industry and other communities to go to the state and say, hey, inflation has gone up. Is there a way to increase that $5 to our community, um, to help with infrastructure and costs? Like, has anybody opted to look at that? I mean, the state has a huge fund of CPV funds that aren't dispersed to our communities that are there for communities to go get. And quite frankly, if you're not a large community, you're probably not going to get them. But I'm wondering if we start leveraging the state to say, hey, we need a little bit more because of the cost of inflation. It's been $5 a head since I've been around over a decade now. So I'm just wondering, has our staff thought about that, tourism department thought about maybe working with the industry and the state to revise that?
Thank you, Abby. Lacey?
Your Honor, um, I'll just speak to it a little bit and then I, I'd like to bounce it to Robert or I don't know if Ralph is, is on board. Perfect. The, the subject of CPV, um, tax is, is a long and complicated one. In order for the head tax amount to be changed would take legislative action because it is currently in state statute, which doesn't mean that it's not possible, right? But I think, uh, to your point, uh, Councilmember Bradby, in terms of inflation and ongoing costs, the industry is also not immune to that. Um, and I don't want to speak for them. So Ralph, if you want to speak to what, what appetite industry might have, as this being a pass-through cost to your customers, what the customer appetite might be for an increased CPV head tax.
Can I do clarification real quick?
Yeah.
I wasn't talking about increasing the overall CPV funds from our partners. I'm referencing there's a pot of money that they already pay into. A portion of that goes to the communities, the other portion remains with the state. It's not given to any community as used however they would like or, and that's the portion I'm talking about. I'm not talking about increasing the fees on the industry. I'm looking at going after that small pot that just sits there.
So the, so before, um, Ralph Hobson. So the city has made requests of the state for a legislative appropriation. Michelle mentioned a little bit ago, the, um, berth two rock pinnacle. Our, we did receive a grant from the state using those CPV funds for that project. We continue to make requests of the state, um, specifying CPV funds, so not the, the allocation that we get every year based on our passenger amounts, but actually that amount that is sitting at the state level. So we continue to make those requests. I forget what we have in currently. It might actually be the Thomas Basin Restrooms, um, as one of the projects. Um, and also possibly the promenade and sorry, and, and electrification. So we continue to request those monies through the state capital project process through CAPSIS. And we make that known to our legislators when we have our fly-in each year. But, um, I'm going to pause and see if there's anything that industry would like to add to that.
Yeah. I would agree that it's, it's an appropriation mechanism that go into the legislature. And I, I assume that all communities are doing that right now. And there's a couple of different pots, the same parameters apply to the use of the funds. There, there are head tax or a CPV. So it becomes an appropriation mechanism to get the, the monies that are in a pot somewhere in the legislative process. I agree with, uh, both Lacey's comments.
So Ralph, do you know if those are confined to, if not, it can be used in any tourist-related port infrastructure in the state of Alaska? Is that correct? Or does it have to go to public?
Not a lawyer.
Neither am I.
You know, you, you, you can't take a pot of them and, and use them in Anchorage or in, in Nome. So, uh, there are restrictions around there that a whole lot of lawyers would look at. But if it's in general for the way they've been distributed already, it becomes just an appropriation mechanism.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, then we'll move on to some new topics, um, updated fee structure?
Uh, Your Honor, um, and industry, uh, as the industry is aware, the council recently approved two ordinances that would increase, uh, the city's wharfage and dockage fees at the port of Ketchikan. Laurie, I believe, gave industry kind of an update that this would be coming before it, um, was introduced to the city council. The city council adopted the two ordinances, uh, back on August 21st. And these would be effective in 2027. So, um, we're trying to adhere to that 18-month requested lead time for industry when we make changes to our fee structure so that industry can, can respond as best as possible with its pricing and sales. To go back a little bit, the city had, for, for quite a while now, has been engaging with an outside firm named Waterworth that provides, um, financial modeling specifically with relation to our, our fees for certain enterprises. Um, and taking a deep dive at the port of Ketchikan as an enterprise, it was fairly clear that the revenue structure as it was currently set up was, was not sufficient projecting into the future for some of our larger capital projects, ongoing operations and also maintenance. And Waterworth had suggested a 15% increase to our revenues, um, starting in 2027 to start, uh, making the, the port a bit more viable financially and better set up for absorbing some of those larger capital projects as we look to the future. So for the dockage fees, which are the, the length that, um, the charges that we, um, make per length of vessel and various increments, we just applied an even 15% and then rounded those up to the nearest quarter dollar for the different increments of ship sizes. For wharfage, we started off in 2027 with, um, going from our current $13 per passenger to $15 per passenger. Uh, the city council, again, um, wanting to make sure that we're not having to adjust these rates more often than necessary and kind of build in a little bit of cushion going forward. They wanted to make a three-year 15% increase, um, sort of system. So going ahead to 2029. So in 2028, that $15 would then increase to $18. And then in 2029, $18 to $21 per passenger, um, at the port of Ketchikan. So, um, again, we had, we had notified industry, we're happy to talk about it more. But I think we're fairly confident at this point that not only can we substantiate those increases, but hopefully it's given industry enough time to respond as well, um, to, to increases looking ahead over the next three years. So happy to take any questions.
Any question? Comments? Thank you, Lacey. Bring us down to the berth four addendum.
Well, I feel a little funny now because we have our Ketchikan Dock Company partners in the audience, but I'm going to, I'm going to do my best and if I get stuck, then I can call on Ethan. But, um, in a nutshell, and I think most, most folks on the call here today are very familiar with this project. Just recently, back on October 2nd, the city council approved addendum number two to the berth four lease agreement between the city and Ketchikan Dock Company. As the, the members are aware, we entered into this lease agreement back in 2006 in order to facilitate the construction of the berth four facility. And then that lease agreement was, um, had an addendum added to it, um, back in 2008 to modify the actual plans, which are the plans that are now in place today. Earlier this year, Ketchikan Dock Company gave a presentation to the city council on their plans to, I would say revive, um, a, a set of plans and, uh, expansion upgrades for the berth four facility that had been talked about for quite some time, um, to enhance the, the deepwater dolphin, again, for, um, accommodating larger vessels and more safely accommodating those vessels. And then to replace the breasting, uh, barge that the ship, uh, rests against and passengers offload onto. The, this project is a two-year phased project. So the first phase would, um, kick off, I believe, this winter, um, if all things go according to plan. And then be sort of wrapped up, um, for the 2026 season. And this would just focus on the dolphins for, for the facility. And then looking to the next construction year, the off-season construction year would be replacing the barge with the entire project being done and complete, ready to go for the 2027 cruise season. We've had a lot of back and forth, um, between the city and Ketchikan Dock, um, Dock Company, some really good dialogue. And I'm pleased that we reached sort of a final addendum that I think is, um, mutually beneficial and, and reaches the intent and the needs of both organizations. I believe the Army Corps permit is still pending, it's still under review. But barring that, again, the project should be kicking off here this winter and then all buttoned up for the 2026 season. So, um, again, as we mentioned, when, when talking about the berth three project, the berth four project is, is very similar in that it's not a full upgrade. It's making some fairly low-level modifications to better accommodate those larger vessels that we're already seeing. And as Preston mentioned, you know, better positioning the port of Ketchikan to continue taking those vessels so that they're not going to other facilities, either within the Ketchikan area or, um, going to another port altogether. Happy to try to take any questions.
Hearing and seeing none? And this is an update on that status of memorandum of agreement. So we already covered that. Have you got more to add to it?
Oh, so, Your Honor, this is for the, um, the memorandum of agreement between the city and Ketchikan. Yep, or between the city and, and CLIA.
And we started that process, but we never came to, uh, we, we provided some fairing of documents, and, and continuing to amend them and change them. So where are we at in that?
Yeah, so, Your Honor, and, and Laurie, you can hop into at any point in time. Someone, when city representatives and CLIA last got together in, um, in the spring, in April, there was a lot of dialogue about what, what had been developed, maybe being a little too much or, or not, not necessarily meeting the intent of what we wanted that agreement to originally be. It was, it was more than was necessary. So the parties kind of mutually agreed, um, to simplify that agreement, sort of pare it down to its essence. And the industry, uh, offered to take a first stab at, at drafting that agreement. So just a few weeks ago, we received, um, what the industry had put together. And it is definitely more simplified than what we had last been discussing. So staff has been, been looking at it. And our next step from the city side is we have a scheduled executive session for this, uh, week's, uh, regular council meeting on Thursday to discuss that process more and where that agreement is at with city council, make sure that, um, we're on track with, with council's intent and objectives for that agreement.
Thank you. Any comments?
And I would like to add, um, to, to the folks on, online that did participate in drafting the agreement that we're very appreciative that you did that. Obviously, when we, we took our stab at it, it sort of ballooned and expanded. So thank you all very much, Renee and Laney in particular, for shepherding that so that we have something to, to look at and hopefully, um, wrap up with pretty soon.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none? We can go down to attendee comments. So let's start with our partners. Do you have any of our attendees, uh, from the industry wish to make, uh, some comments here at the end of the meeting?
Counselor?
Well, Mayor Severson? Yeah, counsel, uh, staff. Just, you know, as I see some of the discussions today and combine this with the ones we've had and put it together, we're going through a continued phase of growth and change. And as we've seen in the past, when we do make these changes, we are able to keep up with one another. And so I'm, I'm very appreciative of this meeting and this dialogue. You know, the partners who are here on the industry side and on the city side. And, you know, as we go through and make these decisions, you know, I, I think of it in the context of we are all doing what we need to. There is a good light at the end of this tunnel. We'll continue to change as we need to. But I'm, I'm very- But I'm very hopeful in what I see and what I hear today. And so thank you to everyone.
Thank you for that. Anybody else?
Yeah. Hi, Mayor, and City Council and everybody that's in the audience there at the Civic Center. Just want to thank you again. I thought it was a, you know, although we're out in the borough, we're one of those that uses the city quite extensively. And we thought it was a good season. I think the road construction was handled well. You know, a few challenges here and there for sure with the weather and the construction. But all in all, our guests continue to enjoy Ketchikan, another good season, I think, under our belts. We had the Norwegian Joy join the Bliss and the Encore this year. So we did provide, you know, a larger ship, but we knew it would be successful because we are so successful with the Bliss and the Encore already. But very, very, very good season. Thanks to all of the people that make Ketchikan a success, including you in the audience and all of our vendors and all of our shore excursions. I think the continued dialogue is really beneficial. And I look forward to coming in person again in March to have our preseason, March or April, to have our preseason meeting. So thank you again, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's Renee. I would just echo both Preston and Sandy's remarks and just say there was a lot of positive information that came out of this conversation, hearing about all the ports and harbors improvements and that, you know, that you have been able to work with the borough on the $500,000. These are all positive. We're happy to hear it. We're happy to be at the table. Again, Lacey and Laurie just are a pleasure to work with and always responsive. And we appreciate that continued relationship.
Thank you, Renee. Anybody else?
I'll jump in real quick, just echo my thanks as well on behalf of all the Carnival brands that call in Ketchikan. And appreciate the hospitality you showed at the end of the season as well when the weather went bad and we had to stay alongside in Ketchikan a little bit longer to hide from the terrible weather. Also, just wanted to say that that acknowledged the same collaboration that Renee just did. And that's true as well with our ground handler, Happalaska. And we appreciate all the work on traffic and routing and construction and all the things that happened. So just appreciate it. It's been a great summer. We're looking forward to next year. Princess will be bringing its brand-new Star Princess to Alaska next year. It was just inaugurated last week, and it's getting ready to sail across the Atlantic and make its way around the West Coast next spring. So quite excited about Star Princess. She'll be the first LNG ship, large-scale LNG ship in the market. So maybe in the spring meeting, we'll have a little more information to share with the council and everybody about that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just also want to say thank you and Mayor Severson and the rest for being allowed to be here and have this opportunity to be part of this communication before we even entered Alaska area. So highly appreciated, and I'm really looking forward to 2026.
Well, again, we're gonna welcome you to the community in the Southeast market. Now you're part of the family. Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, all. I think I'm the last one to speak. Beth Tippett with Disney Cruise Line. Thank you again. Thank you, Laurie and the team. You have been great to work with over these past few years, particularly when we reach out for various tours or other community events. So really want to continue with that partnership moving forward. And we'll be bringing two ships into Alaska next season. So even more opportunity to partner. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Darian Flowers here from MSC Group. I just want to echo the comments of my colleagues from the industry, but also my colleague Yana Love. We are very, very excited to join the community. As you can hear from all of us here across the industry, we deeply appreciate the partnership that we've had with the city and borough. And we are, at our company, uniquely excited to bring, you know, our guests from around the world to see the beauties of Southeast Alaska. And we appreciate your partnership in allowing us to do that.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming to the market. Anybody else? Council members? I'll start off. So the good news is we have a beautiful paved Tongous Avenue with new sidewalks and traffic patterns. But you haven't seen anything yet. Our understanding is there's gonna be a large project for the viaduct on Tongous Avenue, which stretches from where the old silver mining was to the tunnel. It started out as a $120 million project, and now it's grown to over $500 million. And it's gonna be a 10-year project of construction on the viaduct to replace some of it with fill sections and to rebuild those sections because they're aged and they're having issues of failure. The bridge section right now is rated, I think, at a four out of 10. If it drops to a three, then they'd have to look at maybe weight limits or lane closures or something. But the state of Alaska is working very hard. And we're gonna have ongoing conversations about traffic flow, how it's gonna affect us, what the schedules are and that type of stuff. But I just wanted to let you know that there's more coming. Jack, do you have anything?
Just thank everybody for their time. And it's nice for us to have things kind of quieting down. I know for industry, it never really seems to quiet down. So best of luck with everything you have in front of you. I'd also like to thank Ms. Eden Shaw for making her voice known and for representing KIC, that organization, and for the input that they can have with these conversations as well. Thank you.
Riley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just, one thing that, maybe a little bit different perspective, but I think something that everybody's probably aware of, but on our end, we're certainly looking at is we're constantly being faced with little choice but to have to consider raising our taxes and all our different rates on all our citizens just constantly now. And, you know, one thing that the community and the council, I think, is looking for more and more, which we've been appreciating. But, you know, we're always gonna be looking for a little more participation, certainly with the types of things that the cruise visitors use. So, you know, we've been talking, having some ideas thrown around, but just hope everybody's gonna be, you know, lenient and would at least consider some ideas to try to alleviate. Because as you all probably know, our population, you're, you know, we have this housing problem in the summer, and our year-round population is actually shrinking. And the reason for that is that families and regular working-class people are having harder and harder time to live here year-round. So we just hope everybody be on the same page with us to work together to come up with solutions for the whole town that the cruise passengers do also use. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Riley. Abby?
Yes, thank you to everyone. It was a fantastic season. Even though we started off with landslide and then road construction and then a downturn slightly in the economy, Ketchikan seemed to fare fairly well. And that's great for the community long-term. I'm excited to see the new lines coming in for 2026 and kind of shaking things up from how they have been for the last decade or two. So I'm really excited to see that, meet those folks. And yeah, I'll see many of you guys next week.
Thank you, Abby. Dick?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just thank everybody for coming today. And just remember, our whole goal is to have our passengers come to shore, have a friendly time, and they're safe. And we can do that by working together. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick. Judy?
I guess I just want to echo what everybody else has already said. And I enjoy these meetings. I think I learn a lot. I learn what's going on in our own city. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Lilith?
Yeah, I love that we're having these conversations. It's great. I just wanna, I get worried when we add this extra capacity to our docks that we don't necessarily have the extra capacity in our town. And so I'm all for the free market. I'm not saying anything against that. I think the town is losing its appetite for Thursdays. We have a lot of people come in on Thursdays. And so I would please ask you, as you're making your schedules, please think about what it's going to do to the town if you pile on extra people coming in on those high days? Because there's gonna be a time where it becomes so bad that they're going to want to have actions to restrict. So we don't want to have to restrict anyone. We want everyone to be making as much money as they can. That's what makes the world go around. But we need to make sure we're realizing what limitations could come from all this wonderful business. We're kidding. So good luck to everyone. This is my last meeting, and I wish everyone luck and prosperity.
Thank you, Lilith. Jay?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am very appreciative of our partners joining us. I've been on the council for five years now. And I've seen the progress in which we are working together. But we need to do more. We, my biggest passion, I've been in this industry since 1983 and mostly worked through the tourism cruise ship industry from the Caribbean to Best Palm Beach to here. My biggest passion and my biggest concern at the same time is the quality of life for the local population of the places the cruise lines call. The quality of life of the person that lives in Ketchikan needs to be enhanced and not suppressed. And I think as partners with the cruise line agencies, we are working towards that. Our partnership with Southeast Thivadoring to make improvements on berth four, to allow for bigger ships and allow for passenger amenities is a welcome thing. Through this, we will make sure that as we get larger number of passengers, the quality of life for the local population is enhanced as well and not suppressed. And I would request our partners, the cruise lines and cruise line agencies and vendors and everybody associated with this industry to work together, not only support morally, but support us financially so we enhance this model of unity between cruise line partners and the local community and that the local community looks forward to welcoming the visitor and making the visitor experience enhanced and appreciated and loved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Staff? Lacey?
Thanks, Your Honor, and thank you to everybody online who joined today. I know you are all incredibly busy people. Your industry never stops. You're in various time zones. So again, it's already been said, but just really appreciate the ongoing dialogue and the fact that we have sort of on the schedule each year, twice a year, to get to come together and talk about how things have been going, what we're all looking forward to and how we can work together. So it's much appreciated. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo everything that everybody says here. Appreciate your time and everything else. And I think this is a very good partnership. Works out for everybody and just wanted to say thank you.
Anybody else?
So I would like to thank everyone for being here today. I know that a lunch hour is not always the most convenient for those folks here. I hope that our meeting you has helped that. But I also would like to thank everyone who is on the call. I know you're all around the world right now, and I truly appreciate whatever time zone you're in that you took the time to be here with us today because your partnership is critical to helping make this industry as successful as it can be. And we will see you in the spring.
So with that, is there any other business to conclude? Seeing and hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn. Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.